Remind my colleagues to please silence all electronic devices at this time. I will be circulating the graduation attendance grid one more time for those of you who didn't quite know what your schedule was going to be in June, so it's coming around again if you're able to do it. The pressing matter on this, though, is the Adult Learning Center graduation, which is on May 23rd, so we absolutely have to know today about that one. So that, this is coming back around for that. We will have a closed session possibly after this workshop, but also probably after the formal as well. I don't think we'll have time to do both of them before the formal session, but we'll see. But definitely we'll try to get to at least one of them, the one that has to do, I think...
Disposition of property.
Just real estate, right. So the other thing is, I'd like to announce that VSPA has a summer conference scheduled for July 17th, and I know it's kind of far off, but I'd like you to be thinking about it. If you're thinking about going to it, you might want to add July 17th to your calendar. If you think you might want to attend that VSPA workshop, it's usually held in Richmond. And then the next thing is, we have our Virginia School Board Association legislative proposals, and so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. McDonald.
Thank you. Want to thank committee, Ashley McLeod, and Billy Melnick, and our legal counsel, and Joel Andrews, who is with us to help answer any questions that we might have about these two items, which the legislative committee approved about 10 minutes ago.
Yeah.
So I apologize that you didn't have text ahead of time, but we wanted to make sure any last-minute changes were reflected in what we talked about today. So we have two items, one dealing with increased student access for internships and apprenticeships, and another item on special education process and procedures. We'll talk about the easy one first, and that is the increased student access for internships and apprenticeships, if you might not have guessed. So basically, what we're, this is new language that we are proposing, which reads, "The VSPA supports establishing a tax credit for businesses that host high school juniors or seniors from a high school, technical center, or specialty school as interns or apprentices in a qualified field that aid students in completing CTE course requirements or in preparation for career certifications." The committee felt that this is an extension of the work that Virginia Beach, and really the state, is doing on workforce development and looking for a way that we can better partner with businesses to provide opportunities to better prepare students for the workforce. And so our rationale is, reads as part of the new standards of accreditation, "All students are required to have work-based learning experiences. One of the best avenues for students to receive firsthand work-based learning experiences is for students to participate in apprenticeship programs through local businesses during their junior or senior year. This allows for students to gain actual experience and exposure to the workplace. There are, however, few opportunities for students to participate in these programs by providing a tax incentive for businesses to make internships or apprenticeships available to high school students. This will encourage more businesses to open up internship or apprenticeship opportunities for students." And that is all the language that we're presenting to you today, and so I'm going to open up for questions, comments, or concerns about this item before we move forward.
Mr. Edwards? The magnitude of the tax credit would be related to what factors? I realize that our position wouldn't necessarily have to identify it, but at some point, it would have to be quantified if it was being sent forward.
Yeah, we did not get in the weeds. We had some conversation about what the length of the program should be and what should be done. We didn't want to define too specifically what those things are, as that would be something that would probably be debated in the General Assembly if someone actually took up legislation on this. So that would be what we would define it. Does anyone else from the committee want to chime in? Or Mr. Andrews?
Yeah, I'm trying to find real quick, there is some legislation that dealt with that last year, and that for the introduced version, it didn't pass. It had capped out at 2,500, but I think the substitute had significantly lowered it, because that was a pretty high bar, so I think they lowered it to another amount than I'm trying to find right now. But, you know, they will always put a cap on that, and they'll also put a cap on the total amount for that pot of money, so it's not this unknown amount that the state is thinking of spending tax credits. How they handle their situations.
So did it just, like, die in the finance side last year?
It died in the Senate, because there wasn't, there was not an appropriation to deal with that on the state side.
And for the record, we added the word internship, and we did that. Ashley was opposed to that initially, but we made, we really mean a meaningful internship and not, hey, can you get my coffee? And you're here under our roof, but a meaningful internship to encompass, you know, I mean, it really needs, for juniors and seniors, it's not a full-blown, it doesn't necessarily have to be a full-blown apprenticeship.
Right. We had some conversation about what the meaning of the word internship and what the meaning of the word apprenticeship is and how they're defined, and what we really wanted to do is, the last thing we added right before having this printed is to make sure that internship or apprenticeship, you know, aids students in completing CTE coursework or leading to completion of a, or preparation of career certification. So really, defining that as something that's going to help that student actually accomplish something, because I think the original conversation around internships is that there's a lot of vagueness in what interns do and whether they have or do not have hands-on work experience and the thing that they should be focusing on rather than just grabbing coffee. So that, I think that was her concern, so I think we've solved that.
Right.
And opened up the language, so it wasn't, so that someone could call something an internship that still satisfied these requirements.
Correct.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? All right, so we'll have that on the action agenda for our next formal meeting. Now for the media one, Special Education Process and Procedures. This is actually an amendment to a current VSPA position on special education, and our rationale, and we'll get to what the attached says, but the rationale for this is, "Over the last several years, the cost for special education services has grown exponentially in Virginia. This is in large part due to the fact that federal government has consistently failed to fully fund their share. This has shifted the greater cost to local school divisions and states. This funding crisis compounded by an arduous and cumbersome process to resolve special education disputes," and that's going to be a lot of our focus in the language we'll look at in a moment, "between school divisions and parents, which can lead to unnecessary and costly litigation. Virginia should take steps to streamline the special education administrative process with a focus on the shortest process and best outcome for the child. The attached policy amendment also incorporates recommendations from AASAs 2016 Rethinking Special Education Due Process." And so looking at the attached document is actually the current VSPA item 11.1, Education of Children with Disabilities, and our additions are underlined. So essentially, we're saying, "VSPA opposes any regulation or law that would shift a greater portion of special education funding onto local school divisions. The VSPA supports a special education process that is focused on reaching the best outcome for the child in the shortest amount of time possible. The VSPA supports state special education laws and regulations that streamline the individualized education program, IEP, process and procedures. The current process can take significant amount of time, lead to unnecessary litigation, significant expenses incurred by both the parents and the school division, and results that are not always in the best interests of the child or student. Specifically, the VSPA supports the strengthening and simplification of the IEP process by: the use of state-approved trained IEP mediators to help resolve IEP disputes during the creation of a student's IEP; mandating mediation led by neutral third-party prior to the initiation of any formal hearing; and requiring hearing officers to be trained to address special education disputes through mediation and other less formal avenues." And that is our additions. So as we know from cases that we have been briefed about, there are a lot of cases that go to a very lengthy and costly due process hearing for special education students that really could likely be settled if a mediation process were to take place. Right now, mediation is an option. What we are saying is that if we mandated mediation, a lot of the situations that we find going into those costly and lengthy hearings could be resolved before that process even begins. And we thought this was an important step to take, noting that throughout the entire Commonwealth, this is an issue, as we've been talking to VSPA about what they're seeing as well. And with that, I will open up to questions, comments, concerns.
Just a question for you on the wording, the second bullet point under the new language.
Should be what?
Mandating mediation, well, that's not, actually wasn't my point, but yeah.
Yeah, that is a correction, thanks.
Mandating mediation led by neutral third-party. Did you give any thought as to who that neutral third-party would be and who would pay for it?
Ms. Maney, I couldn't address that. They already, VDI already has a bank of third-party mediators.
Okay, so that's not new.
Yeah, I don't, part of our thought was, they already have this process, but it's voluntary, so they have a bank of people who are not VDI employees that are trained mediators. Our also thought was, you would see in a court situation where some judges work to try to settle a case ahead of time. If it doesn't settle, or they can't work out some of the issues, then it goes to another judge to try it. So our other thought was, you could also use hearing officers who aren't handling the case to try to work out with the parties. That's a, it's a common concept in a court hearing. Try to minimize the amount of time you're spending on a court case. If you can resolve any issues, resolve them. So you could, I don't think it would require that VDI would have to hire new people. I think they have the staff in place, they just find a way to use those people more effectively.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Edwards?
The, the first sentence under rationale makes it lead into, oh my gosh, here we are, crying about special ed funding and the Fed's not stepping up and all that. And that's not, I mean, if you read on, if you read two sentences, then you get into the juxtaposition. But I wonder if it, if our issue might be better served by not even addressing, yeah, everybody knows that anyway, and rather than stating it, just get right into the fact that the students are ill-served by an unduly long process, and it does divert limited resources to litigation vice, you know, the student services. I mean, that was just, you know, reading it fresh, seeing it for the first time, the, you know, I just, that's my reaction.
Yeah, so we've taken a couple stabs at our actual amendments, and I think when we first started, we had a lot more to do with funding, and I don't know if we necessarily came back and updated the rationale after that work. Joel Andrews, what do you think about what Mr. Edwards has said?
Yeah, no, I don't disagree, and I think we can certainly tweak that language to better reflect what the changes in the policy are on that, because I don't, I agree with you.
I think it was, I think we just found it interesting that their item doesn't speak to the fact that we are hampered because of funding issues, and I think that was maybe the impetus for why we attacked that at the same time. But we can rework that. I thought the same thing when I was reading the rationale, that at least we should flip those two issues to make what we're really getting at.
Mm-hmm.
Kind of the, yeah, first thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think, I, I mean, there's, when it comes to IEPs, there's development of one, and then there's implementation, and this does seem to cover both, am I correct? I mean, even though the first bullet specifically says creation of a student's IEP, but then the third bullet is just referring to special education disputes, which can happen at any point along the way.
Yeah, maybe Ms. Lynetti can fill us in on...
I think the, a lot, understanding, you've got about 8,000 special ed kids. Bath, Midori, we have no problem, so if we get there. It's usually just a handful of cases, and those cases tend to be, what is the education service going to look like? And there, so that, sometimes it's the implementation, a lot of times, I'm not getting what I want from the IEP, so then I want to go look at placement on it. That is also developing an IEP, it's sort of a mysteria. If you say, "I want my child to go to a private school, I want you to pay for it," you are looking at a different IEP concept than, "I just want, you know, 10 more hours of service this week." So, but sometimes it's the same thing. They tend to blend together. "I'm not getting what I want," or, "You're not implementing my IEP, so therefore I think I need something else, I need a different kind of placement." They tend to blur the lines, and that's usually how they start. And for us, for any school division, the expensive cases are when the families are looking to get private placement paid for, and that's the very expensive cases that we have to deal with.
And that falls under the category, again, of the content of the IEP.
It generally starts with, "I'm not getting the services," or, "Not implementing what I want, so now I'm going to expand it into the IEP itself."
Well, you're saying it would require a new IEP, so it is a, it does fall into the former rather than the latter category, or it is great.
It's unusual to have an initial implementation of an IEP where you don't reach some agreement. At some point, while you're implementing the IEP, I no longer like the IEP and I want it changed, so it's sort of a combination of both.
But conflict that might lead to mediation or due process hearings can happen either during the development of IEP or if a parent doesn't believe that they're getting the services.
In Virginia Beach, it's pretty rare that the initial IEP is something where the parent's challenging. They're usually fine with, at some point, they want some change to it. That is where we tend to see due process hearings.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
Thank you. Ms. Felton?
No.
Oh, I thought you were signaling me. Okay.
Good answer, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this? Does anyone else have anything to bring forward during administrative matters? Mr. Edwards?
Three of us had the opportunity to go through school orientation, that may not be the perfect term for it, but Trenace and Joel and I took advantage, they had one session scheduled today at 2:00, and they have another one in two weeks at 2:00. And I don't want to, we don't need to spend a lot of time now, but I would encourage my colleagues to either sign up for it, or if you don't, talk to one of the three of us, and I think we'll explain that you're really missing an opportunity. The vast majority of our teachers are going to be heavily engaged in working with this at the end of the summer and as they roll into next year, and I think it's incumbent on us to understand what they're, what they have going for them, because it's a, it's really a powerful system, but it is something that they're going to have to learn how to use and use and do. And we had the opportunity, we had senior staff here, and we had lower-level staff, and we had students all working with us individually, and it was really an opportunity. So if you guys want to add anything, let me know.
It's something new, another new thing coming down, so you will hear people saying, "Oh, it's more," you know, but what it has to offer and how advantageous it will be for a teacher is really worth going into it and learning it and accepting that. The other thing is, like, the things we've, you've started that are new, we're not making them do it. They are being invited and encouraged to do it, and they're not being pushed to do it. So how they feel comfortable, what they feel comfortable with doing. And once they see it and they are, you know, introduced to it and see what it can do, I think many people will, you know, will want to do it. Yeah, sure, it's going to take time, but if we're going to work with technology, which that's just, that's a given in life today, you're going to be doing that, you know? You're going to be spending time learning it.
What's the name of the program again?
Schoology.
Schoology.
Schoology, I always say it right.
For Schoology.
I like Schoology, but I mean, Schoology.
Until you can pronounce it, you can't wear the flag.
Come on, I put it on my, um...
On your car?
No, I put it on my laptop.
It is very, it is very cool.
And we got a folder on it.
We, we had a presentation a bit last, but the hands-on experience was very neat to get into. Having worked with teachers using SchoolNet and trying to post curriculum and share curriculum, this makes it 1,000 times easier to pull curriculum from central and use it in classrooms and organize your content. I was very impressed, and I did it what Dan said about, you know, getting your hands-on experience using it, because it is really, really an impressive tool that integrates with a lot. And I just have to thank the Department of Technology and Teaching and Learning for giving us the opportunity to do that. It was very enlightening, and I'm pretty excited to see this expand in our classrooms.
Cool. Ms. Frye?
Yes, two quick things. Symphony City ended its, the premiere season for the new conductor, Daniel Booth, with Ode to America, and it was, it ended with the 1812 overture, and we had our own students join in at the last moments of it. So there were six young men from Princess Anne High School Band who chimes and that bass drum, I'm still, my ears are still ringing from that, and the chorus, and so, and from Salem High's performing Arts Academy, 20 vocal singers who joined in in the final chorus. So it was really nice to have our, our students involved, and, I mean, it was a sold-out crowd at Sandler Center, a really big deal. And kudos to my Dr. Kudrow at Salem and to the band director at Princess Anne. And the other event, and Mrs. Anderson was at it with me, and I know it's on, I haven't opened the link yet, but Media sent out a notice about it today, a new unified basketball league at the middle school level for special ed students joining up with. And they're, they're called the athletes, and the gen ed teammates are considered their buddies. And we attended, last Monday was the opening, two, two different rounds of games, and the four middle schools, and help me out, but it's Bayside, Lynn Haven, Corporate Landing, and there's a fourth one.
Independence.
So we watched the two games and spoke with, the coaches are a combination of special ed teachers or coaches at the schools, and the special, Student Activities Director, Aside, really worked with Special Olympics to help get this off the grounds, and his name's on the tip of my tongue, but I really, we commended him as well. And so take the time to read the link and even to come out and watch a game.
It was extremely fulfilling to watch these kids have such a good time together. At each, on each team, there are three special ed kids and, or special need kids, not all, and then two regular ed kids on the court at the same time. And it's really, really fulfilling to go watch them and watch them all have such a great time together. It was really a nice evening, so if you get a chance to go, I think they play on Mondays.
But open up the link, I'm sure it'll mention the schedule.
Right, yeah. It's at Bayside Middle. Any other admin matters?
Okay, so next, on our workshop agenda is the Professional Learning Program Redesign. Dr. Spence?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Yeah, Dr. Robertson and Dr. Gorm are going to talk about some changes to how we're working with teachers through our professional growth programs.
So, good afternoon. It seems appropriate during Teacher Appreciation Week that we present the PLP redesign. You know, Go4 accompanies 2020, a culture of growth and excellence talks about creating models to recruit and retain teachers and staff in a manner that promotes personalization. And so over the last several years, many of us have been talking about the Professional Learning Program, and over the last several years, I think we could say that the program has evolved from where it was not last year in the classroom 2001 to where it is today. This was not a redesign that was born out of the people standing in front of you. It was born out of discussions, again, by school board members, principals, teachers over the years, and really the work of Teaching and Learning under Amy Cashwell, Human Resources under John Mira, School Leadership under Rashad Wright, and of course, PGI under my leadership. And our teams have had conversations about what this redesign would look like to, again, follow in line with a culture of growth and excellence for staff and take advantage of some of the technology that we have available to us now that we didn't have before. So Janine and Stephanie are going to take you through the redesign and give you a little bit more information, and then, of course, we'll be available to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
We want to start by looking at our updated Professional Learning Program belief statement, because this statement communicates our commitment to high-quality impactful professional learning and, more importantly, our belief about the professionalism of teachers who value learning for themselves as well as their students. These beliefs and commitment are not new. We have long worked to provide high-quality, relevant professional learning. But I want to draw your attention to the underlying phrases, because this emphasis, "to empower teachers to be agents of their own learning and individual pathways for growth," this is the shift that is new and explicit in our revised Professional Learning Program. These words also probably sound familiar to you, because they are often voiced as we talk about what we aspire for students. Just as we want to empower our students, we want to do the same for our teaching staff. To help understand how we have readyed ourselves for this shift, I would like to walk you through some brief highlights of professional learning for the past 17 years, beginning in 2001, when the annual professional learning requirement was initially added. The first period of the Professional Learning Program can be characterized as standardization. It was the first systematic and comprehensive professional learning for all teaching staff. The requirements were primarily mandated with little choice or differentiation. There was an emphasis on internal professional learning offerings with limited opportunity to receive credit for external learning activities. But just as we focus on continuous improvement now, there were many updates to the program, including a major revision in 2007, when Apple became the Professional Development Program, or PDP. 2012 marks the next big shift in professional learning. This shift was teacher-driven, created by teacher leaders with input from multiple focus groups of teachers. This iteration can be characterized as differentiation, with teacher choice representing the majority of the 22-point requirement. Teachers were able to receive credit for a broad range of learning activities, including external ones. With growing technology capacity, our ability to offer online learning opportunities increased, providing teachers greater flexibility, as well as an opportunity to network with colleagues across the division. Specializations were introduced, representing a further shift in the progression of honoring the different paths teachers might take for learning, focusing greater attention on outcomes. And lastly, two Professional Learning Days were embedded in the calendar, providing teachers focused time to learn during the contract day. And yes, with that change in 2012, there was another name change intended to signal a focus on learning, the Professional Learning Program, or PLP. These changes over the last six years have led us to where we are now, with the capacity to personalize learning for teachers. With this new iteration of the Professional Learning Program, teachers are given ownership and agency for their learning. The next several slides will help explain what that means. First, it is important to note that while we are making changes, there is much that stays the same. We will continue to have a Professional Learning Program. Virginia requires all school divisions to provide a program of high-quality professional development for Standard 5 of the Virginia Standards of Quality. And in addition, teachers are required to earn Professional Development Points in order to maintain their teaching license. Both central office departments and school staff will continue to offer professional learning geared towards supporting teacher growth and meeting the needs of students. For teachers, the number of opportunities will not decline, and in fact, may increase because of the lifting of constraints associated with previous requirements. Frontline, our online professional learning management system, will continue to be used for registration and recording of activities. And as previously allowed, teachers are able to create their own professional learning activities for themselves and their peers. Teachers will continue to have responsibility for professional learning. There will continue to be essential professional learning that teachers will need to attend to stay current in curricular and program requirements and responsive to the needs of their students and schools. These essential professional learning activities may occur year-round and may be required to be completed outside of contract dates. Teachers will also participate in the calendar-embedded days dedicated for this purpose. Now that we have talked about the elements of the Professional Learning Program that are staying the same, let's talk about what's changing. let's talk about what's changing. The obvious headline for change is the elimination of the twenty-two points annual requirement. While teachers will be expected to engage in learning every year, there is no longer the element of compliance with the twenty-two point requirement. As a reminder, teachers are required to earn one hundred and eighty points to renew their teaching license over a five-year window. With the removal of the annual requirement, teachers now have the flexibility and responsibility to manage their progress towards recertification. Because the previous program focused on the annual accumulation of the twenty-two points, there was an annual deadline of April thirty. Now the professional learning doesn't have to fall within a window and can take place when the teacher needs it. While it might be easy to just focus on the elimination of the point requirement, we want to focus on what that change truly signifies. Removing the points requirement and the constraints associated with it frees teachers to make choices for their learning based on what they need and not how many points the activity might earn. It changes the conversation from focusing on point accumulation to what is really important, the learning and most importantly, the impact on our students. Fortunately, we have an avenue to ensure that these conversations take place and Stephanie Ensmann, Human Resources Specialist, will join me to tell you more about how we are strengthening connections between the teacher evaluation system and professional learning.
So the evaluation system is not changing. In fact, it is being enhanced by the new redesign. The formative process will continue to include options for teachers to work with one another, collaborate with one another, and really focus on the professional learning that they need to assist themselves and their students in their classroom. What we are doing is being able to leverage that formative process even more. We are going to continue to support teachers in their conversations with their administrators, help them identify the professional learning that they really need to support their students in their gains and growth in their classroom. We want to bring greater alignment between the professional learning that they are participating in and the needs that they have embedded within their classroom. We're really looking on that impact on the outcomes within that classroom. The summative process is staying the same. It's still over a three-year period for continuing contract teachers and will still continue to look at all of the elements participated over that three-year process, including the professional learning that they participated in and the impacts that it's having in their classroom. As required by the state, there's still the professional learning professionalism standard on the evaluation and it will still continue to have a focus on the professional growth that teachers participate in. I'm going to turn it back to Dr. Gorham for her to summarize the communication and supports for this redesign process.
So, we're going to share the communication that's already occurred and the support that we are planning to help implement these changes. On March sixteenth, Dr. Spence emailed all staff to announce the changes. At the same time, we launched our PLP page on the internet and as always for teachers, that's our go-to place for communicating information. We have provided you with two of the resources we have posted, posted there, an FAQ and an overview chart. Mrs. Ensmann and I also met with principals in March at their lead meetings to provide them with an overview of changes so that they could be a resource for their teachers. And as teachers needed to be able to make plans for the summer, we published the Essential Professional Learning Sessions on April twelfth. This summer, we will work with principals and invited teacher leaders at the administrators conference. And during the year, there will be ongoing support for principals at their citywide leadership meetings. Thank you for the opportunity to share the redesign of the Professional Learning Program. We would be happy to answer any questions.
I'm absolutely thrilled with this new change and I know that there will be many teachers out there who will be just as happy to hear about this as, as I am. So, is there anyone else that would like to comment? Ms. Riggs?
My next. I have a question. If there are professional development requirements that like a school does and they're doing it, say, this summer and there's just no way that teacher can be there, what are they doing?
Just as we-
In place of that, like they have before? Are they going to offer them another time during like work week or something like that?
Yeah, just as we've always done, we, we ask principals to offer makeup sessions for teachers and that occurs, you know, year-round. So they would, they would be, they would provide makeup. We want our teachers to be prepared and if that means, especially over the summer, that we have some flexibility in how they do that, then we do that. I know for our division requirements, both elementary and secondary are offering quite a lot online, which means that teachers can take advantage of that at any point during the summer, wherever they may be.
That's good to hear too. Ms. Manning?
I think this is great and I think our teachers will be pleased hopefully with this. I do have a question on, I was just reading through the frequently asked questions, these are great. Do I still need to attend mandatory professional learning activities? Yes. So, and I, I know it says that it varies depending on what your job is, what you teach. Can you give me a rough idea of, say, a core teacher, math or English? How many mandatory hours there is per year?
So, it, it does vary depending on, in elementary, you know, those teachers teach all subject areas. I believe it's probably three for the, that teach all the content areas.
Approximately three hours.
Yes. And that's probably pretty close to being the same for our secondary. And then there are some that if they had no updates, they don't have any.
Okay, great, thank you.
So it would vary from year to year depending on if there's, if there's any updates.
Right. It's not an automatic thing that a teacher would have those essential sessions. It's really based on what their curriculum or program requires.
And the biggest thing that I don't think you mentioned is that in the past, teachers were penalized monetarily if they didn't meet their twenty-two hours. So obviously, that is going to go away. And so that's another positive aspect to this as well. Ms. Weems?
Yes, thank you. I know most of our teachers when we did a survey took a lot more hours than they were supposed to. And in fact, when I talk to teachers and they maybe come from a different division, they just can't believe what great professional, you know, learning opportunities we have. So this last question on page one, will I still be able to take division professional learning activities? The same diverse choice of activities will be offered so that, so everything that we now offer will still be offered for those that want to use that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Now, and again, this is great because teachers always want to learn how to do better, but they want it to be geared toward, toward what they want, what they need. So, so in the past, if, if I select my own activity outside of that, do I still go through the same process as we have, we have in the past? Get it cleared through the principal or fill out that form?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so that's still there, good. And I know with special education, I think, refresh my memory, I know we had a discussion a couple of years ago about how important it was for all teachers to have some sort of special education training because you come in contact even though you're not a special education teacher. So is that still going to be emphasized or?
Yeah, it is emphasized and there's opportunities to exist and as you noted, they're, they're going to continue to exist.
Okay, great.
So I could just add something to that. I think that you guys can really help us out around these essential learning sessions. I imagine that our Professional Learning Program for our teachers will, will get so much more robust because Carolyn Weems, the teacher, has wanted to provide a learning session with her colleagues, but she didn't want to have to go through the formality that would be required to get it, make it count for points. Well now, you, you can go ahead and do that. If you want to have it count for points, then you'll, you'll complete the form for license renewal and you'll go through that process. But it may be that you don't want to do that. You just want to really have a valuable experience for your colleagues and your colleagues can say, I don't need to worry about the point piece. I want, I want the learning piece and I want to be able to take it right back into the classroom right away. So I think what we'll find is the power of the professional learning will be back into the building.
Yeah.
Job embedded.
Right.
Now, to your point about special education, you guys can help us on this. There will be times where we have, because of things that are occurring within curriculum, within division, that we want to offer essential learning sessions for teachers in areas where we know there's a need to improve. And I, I, I'm going to acknowledge I'm a bit worried that some teachers may say, well, you know, we've kind of changed the name, but it's still mandatory. Well, I mean, in any job you take, there are times where you need to attend to training to improve. But I believe the quality of what we've provided in the PLP program and as we've evolved, as I said at the beginning, have placed us in a position where we can really leverage the talent in this division in a meaningful way. So, I just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
And the other thing I want to say about this is that I have heard from teachers in other divisions who were actually envious of the quality of professional learning that we offer to our teachers because they don't have it in their division. And so, it, it kind of works both ways. Kind of like, you know, if you provide it, they will come. And so our teachers are lucky in that we do provide quality professional learning in our division. So, I appreciate all that you're doing. Thank you. Virtual learning?
So we've got our great team from Teaching and Learning to talk to you about an issue that we've been thinking about. You've probably heard about this in some other school divisions around the country that are thinking about other ways to deal with time, instructional time, particularly as it relates, for example, to inclement weather. I know that never comes up in Virginia Beach, right? And so we want to talk to you about a proposal that we've been thinking about and we've had some good conversations with our teachers about and are interested in your reaction. So, Dr. Cashwell.
All right, great, great introduction. As Dr. Spence said, you know, we've missed a few days. In fact, over the past five years, we have missed twenty-six days of school or had school closures mostly related to inclement weather, resulting, of course, in makeup configurations ranging over the past five years from anything from Saturday school to makeup days to minutes at the end of the school day. So we all know that making up days can pose a number of challenges. These challenges, along with stakeholder input, have caused administration to consider a more proactive approach for how we pick, how we plan for the potential loss of instructional time due to school closure. The administration worked to consider a plan to leverage technology and other instructional best practices to create virtual learning days for the purpose of banking time. You may be aware that other localities across the nation, particularly those with treacherous weather conditions that regularly cause students to be out of school, may hold digital or virtual learning days when school is closed for bad weather, meaning if school is canceled, students log on that day and continue learning. Similar, but not exactly like this concept, we've created a plan that allows students to participate in virtual learning days to actually bank time ahead of school closures, which we can't always predict. So, to take a proactive approach to planning for the potential loss of instructional time due to school closure, the administration has created a plan to implement virtual learning days that will result in two banked instructional days. So during this presentation, Dr. Paul and Dr. Hughes and I are going to define what we mean by virtual learning days. We're going to outline the construct that will allow us to bank two instructional days for the eighteen nineteen school year. We'll explain how the virtual learning day experience will unfold for students and staff. And finally, we'll share a timeline of key events related to the implementation of virtual learning days and explain how we plan to move forward. So what is meant by virtual learning? As a frame of reference, you might compare virtual learning, in this case, to the concept of telecommuting to work, for work or working from home, where employees must work and carry on responsibilities outside of the office. For students, virtual learning is learning that happens at home or in another location than the classroom. However, it is unlike traditional assigned homework, which is meant to simply extend learning or to serve as practice after the school day. Virtual learning days are designed to replicate learning experiences that would have happened if students were in school on an assigned day. And just because the learning is at home and recalling it, calling it virtual, does not mean that it's tech-dependent. It could be a paper pencil activity. But certainly with all schools being one-to-one next year in grades one through twelve and with the implementation of a learning management system, namely Schoology across the division, we're well poised to offer a number of flexible opportunities to students for virtual learning. For a virtual learning day, products of work are completed by students outside of the classroom and then are counted towards instructional time. How does this count as instructional time? Because students are engaged in learning and are showing proof of this learning through work products that demonstrate their mastery as they turn those in to the classroom teacher. October eighth and November sixth are already scheduled days off for students. The plan is to use these days to bank two full instructional days for the eighteen nineteen school year. In advance of these days, students will be assigned virtual learning experiences, which they may complete on the day that they're off or over a designated ten-day window of time. This window of time, or designated window of time, allows for flexibility for students and their families. Furthermore, by design, designating the days ahead of the school year, we're able to ensure that the virtual learning opportunities provided to students are aligned to each of the content areas pacing that students are already learning in school and are connected to the classroom learning that's already happening that week. Note that October eighth would be an A day and November sixth would be a B day, allowing us to bank instructional time for all of the students' assigned classes. As I mentioned at the start of the presentation, a pattern of school closures for inclement weather, along with the desire to find proactive solutions on how to handle making up lost instructional time, caused the senior staff to open a discussion to begin considering innovative solutions. And we did that a bit in January and note the timing, close to inclement weather. So based, of course, on senior staff input and discussion, the Teaching and Learning Team then worked to innovatively create learning experiences aligned to each content area, which you're going to see in a minute, and shared this concept with our teacher assembly for feedback as well as with principals at each level. We then also shared this information with our instructional technology specialists, our ITSs, who work across each school, to ensure that each building might have a designated point of contact for virtual learning days and support teachers on implementing the virtual learning day activities. And I'm now going to turn it over to Dr. Hughes, who will take you through a peek at what virtual learning might look like for elementary students.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. All right. So to begin, let's take a moment to examine the virtual learning and what it will look like in the elementary setting. On this slide, a performance task for each grade level, which are aligned to curriculum pacing and mirror the concepts which would be covered in an elementary classroom during the October eighth virtual learning window. These performance tasks include the integration of language arts, math, content, as well as the five Cs to cover the concepts students would encounter during a regular school day. As Dr. Cashwell mentioned, virtual learning outside of the classroom could be technology or non-technology dependent. For ease of delivery and common experiences, teachers will be able to leverage Schoology, which all schools will be using to some extent, inside the classroom with students involved. The delivery of virtual learning day assignments and the tracking of progress and mastery can all be documented within Schoology. For example, resources could be loaded into Schoology for students where they can view instructional materials, such as videos and other articles, and they're provided options for documenting their work. Teachers can then view progress on assignments over time, provide feedback and ultimately assess their mastery. Assignments can also be delivered via paper pencil for students who may not have internet access at home or for teachers who might not be using Schoology in their classroom. Technology-driven or non-technology-driven, tasks are designed to be interactive, engaging and integrated. On this slide is an example that's meant to replace a full day of learning at the elementary level. It is important to note that tasks students are assigned match the grade level pacing and each task integrates language arts, math, content and the five C area focus. Here, students are being asked to act as a meteorologist and make observations to predict the weather. Note that this activity could be completed at home, on the go or virtually anywhere. At this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Paul for secondary updates.
Thank you, Dr. Hughes. Now let's take a moment to look at what virtual learning will look like in the secondary settings. As Dr. Hughes mentioned, how assignments are completed can be determined by the need of the student and the teacher. Students can use school- from the warm-up to the exit ticket. Students will have opportunities to show their mastery of learning. On this slide, you see a sample sequence of a math lesson in Schoology. Here is a screenshot of the knowledge acquisition section for this lesson. As you can see, students have choice, electing one of multiple ways they can learn the concept, either by using Khan Academy and I X L activity, or through using a T I eighty-four graphing calculator lesson. Once this section of the lesson is completed, there's a mini quiz administered to gauge the student's level of mastery of new learning. Here are two examples of how a science lesson could take place. Both of these examples could be built on Schoology or simply given to students to submit their work by the due date to show their mastery of learning. This is an example of what could be used in many social studies classrooms around the topic of filtering for fake news. This example, as you can see, has several choices for students. For all of our English classes in grades six through 12, we are building lessons that focus on the writing process. Beyond core content areas, concepts have been developed for art, health and P E, music, whether it be performance, music history, or music theory. All T C E classes will have a focus on the required workplace readiness skills, as those are mandatory components of all of our T C E courses from grades six through 12. There will also be full lessons prepared for all levels of oral language. It is important to note that all of the lessons developed at the secondary level can be used by teachers or used as examples of how teachers can build their own lessons for customizing their platform. At this time, we'll turn it over to Dr. Cashwell.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Paul. So, as you've seen, virtual learning, no matter the course, no matter the grade level, or method of delivery, they're all meant to replicate the courses or classwork students would have encountered during a regular school day and are all aligned to our teaching and learning framework. In each of the examples shared with you this afternoon, you can see that teachers plan work as they would plan for any regular school day with the support of teaching and learning and their I T S. Teacher instruction becomes asynchronous for knowledge acquisition that engages the learner in work outside of the classroom setting, where the learner completes tasks either on the designated day or within the window of time. And completed work is submitted by the student and assessed on mastery and content and feedback is provided. Once this cycle is complete, the virtual learning day is complete and instructional time is banned. Not only does the virtual learning day, not only is this construct in alignment with our teaching and learning framework, it further supports the division's efforts to provide flexible learning opportunities that foster student agency. In fact, it furthers our work to support the Virginia Department of Education's requirement that by graduation, all students complete a virtual learning experience. The virtual learning construct for banking days can serve as a first step, or first steps in a way for preparing students for engaging and independent learning opportunities, ultimately preparing them for full online courses later in their school career. Oops, I went too far. So you may wonder, what are our next steps? Earlier in the presentation, I shared a number of key first steps that have led us to this point in May. Following this workshop, we are prepared to communicate the virtual learning concept to internal and external stakeholders. It's our desire to ensure that teachers would be equipped with the support and capacity to plan for these days and that our families would be notified well in advance of any expectations. Part of that communication would include an F A Q for both families and for schools, for teachers and schools. And at this point, we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have or allow you to react to the concept of virtual learning.
Mrs. Holtz?
Um, you set aside October 6th and October 8th?
November.
October 8th and November 6th.
Oh, okay. But if that lesson is supposed to replicate the learning, they missed that particular day, how is that possible? I mean, how bad weather comes January, February, right? So if they're going to make up a day in October?
We're banking the time in advance, so this allows you to be actually ahead in your pacing. So, a lot of the concepts that we would, if students hadn't been participating in virtual learning those days, they would have been later in the learning progression. So it allows for banking time, if that makes sense. It puts you actually ahead of pacing.
Yeah, yeah.
The intent...
What are they learning, though?
The intent is not to try to guess what they might miss.
Right.
The intent is to keep them in the learning cycle that they're already in at that time. So they'll be learning, you know. The lessons that are developed are lessons that they would have around October 8th, around November 6th.
Oh, okay. I get it, I get it.
And then that just puts us a little bit ahead down the road.
Mrs. Riggs?
So, if students choose not to take advantage of banking this time?
It would be the same policy as if they were, whatever that classroom guideline or school grading policies denote, if students are not completing work, then they're not receiving credit for that work. And it would be accounted for.
They would need to be there for the makeup days.
There wouldn't be an assigned makeup day. They would be responsible for making up the work as they would if it were a classroom, scheduled classroom day, and they were not to complete any of the assignments.
Yeah, it's not an option. I mean, it isn't, we wouldn't present it as a voluntary opportunity.
No, it's not an option.
I mean, this is an actual learning day that they need to participate in.
Yes.
Gotcha. No options.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Thank you. You might imagine, anytime we've had closures due to inclement weather, the question comes up of why aren't we using technology to try to bank the time? So I'm really glad that this conversation has happened and that a plan has been formulated. I'd always wondered, whenever I read those emails, I was like, well, how, how can you put together online lessons in time to be kind of going along with what Ms. Holtz said? To be prepared for that day, like, how does that work? So banking ahead of time makes a lot of sense. I'm going to ask a question, I think I know the answer, but I think the difference should just be spoken. What is the difference between this and homework?
Homework is meant to extend learning that's already happened in the classroom and/or provide practice. That's the way our homework is typically designed. And so, this is meant to replicate the learning cycle, where students are grappling with new information and applying it, and then demonstrating mastery of a concept. So the finished product that's returned shows their mastery of concepts that would have been covered in the classroom. And I think Dr. Paul showed an example, particularly for some of the secondary courses, where it takes you through the introductory points of a lesson, all the way to closure for each of the courses you would have been involved in, in school that day. And then in the elementary realm, we were able to take advantage of actually using integrated content. And now, of course, remember for elementary, we're already a bit ahead in instructional minutes, and we're also not earning credits for seat time like we do with V D O E, but they would still be replicating learning in a fashion that covers language arts, math content, and then social studies and science content, as well as our five C content. So it's an integrated task. Since they don't have blocks during the day, it would be one integrated performance assessment.
And a follow-up question. Were the lessons and assignments for these banked days designed to be done within a certain timeframe? So were you saying that these should be done in three hours, four hours?
Ten days. Yeah, so they're meant to be what would have been easily accomplished during about a school period, or whatever the period of time would have been, but recognizing, particularly we've got a published school calendar out, people may have plans on those days. The idea that a student would have to sit home or somewhere on those days and complete those activities sequential may not make sense for every student, every family. So by providing a 10-day window that allows students the opportunity to accomplish that activity in a timeframe that makes the most sense to them.
And also get some support and access to technology if it's needed and some of the things that are going to happen.
Yes.
Right. Mrs. Weems?
Um, yeah, I'm glad that we're doing this because we get those questions all the time. Why, why, why? Don't we have days already banked in? So this will bank two days. Is your intention to increase it the next year to four and then six?
There would certainly be the potential for that. I think learning from this allows us a couple of things. We can see how virtual learning can actually bank days. And then if we were to ever have to experience a school closure that went over a length of time, it might allow us an opportunity to then get teachers thinking about how, and it isn't always as easy to do, having learning continue virtually right then and there for the sequence of time that would have been missed in a way that wasn't necessarily pre-planned. And having a learning management system will allow us to do that in a way we've never been able to do before, would allow teachers to do that more easily. So it certainly opens the windows for us to do both, add additional banked days potentially in the future, and look at continuing on on days where there's unexpected or sequential days of closure.
Because my other question is, can we look at combining this and adding five minutes to the day? Because I think if we had five minutes to the day, starting in September, you know, you just add it all the way through, that banks two days.
So the, we can.
Yeah.
And we just go back to the issue we've been having with that, which is that if we do that, we got to, it's going to shift everybody because the high schools are first, and the high schools are really the only ones that need time added to it.
Yeah, but we're just talking about five minutes.
I understand.
So I mean, you know, that's what, I get that question all the time. And so I tell people, this year, I'm really going to say it, and I will say it over and over again, five minutes a day, I think, brings two days. And five minutes is nothing, either at the beginning or at the end. So I would hope that we could have that conversation, do that and this, and there you've got four days. Because lately, the last three years, we have missed, you know, missed that. So I would like to say that I really like that idea, and I hope that we do that.
I'm with you on that one. Mr. Edwards?
Do we adjust the school calendar to reflect a change in the end of the first semester?
Add in one day.
You're adding two, your bank time is all in the first semester. It appears that your pacing guide should have you finishing the first semester earlier.
Our thought had been to adjust that, not knowing, again, potentially what could be encountered into, but it just positions teachers to not be...
It seems like logically you would if you're going to, otherwise you've lost your benefits of your pacing, and you end up with, with issues in February or March in terms of lost time, then you've really, you know, you've just finished the semester early. I don't know, it just seems like that ought to be considered by...
The grading and reporting, adjusting the grading and reporting windows, I assume is what you're speaking to.
Okay. That's a good point.
We'll have some conversation about it.
But we can certainly look at it.
Mrs. Ryan?
Okay, so, yeah, I, this is interesting because I've talked to Dr. Spence, to some other senior staff, because over the course of the past few years, I started to notice, and I'm sure others too, like, the regional Catholic schools who tend to be high school only, so they have a little advantage in that regard, that they would have digital instruction the day, the snow, during, during...
The actual snow day, right?
Exactly. And, you know, and it gets, that, that part gets trickier, I would think, at the elementary level, except for maybe not. So just to see us evolve to this point, I just find very fascinating.
Mrs. McLeod?
Carolyn brought up points that I had as well, as this is happening, and when they're actually off because of the inclement weather. We know, generally speaking, we should be able to prepare. And the question I have is, if we do that preparation and if we have that online, couldn't we count it as there? I don't go into the office when they tell me I don't have to go into the office, but you, I'm on my computer at home getting my work done still. So that actually is a good work ethic to go in, even if you, you know, if it's expected, if work is expected to be done, it's still expected to be done. So I'm curious if, if there isn't, did you all discuss that as an option as well?
We did. Our, our thinking right now is that we want to see how this works. This is an opportunity to really sort of see how this works. And then that might open the door for opportunities to use, for example, as Amy was talking about, Schoology, to deliver instruction on days when we are out for inclement weather. The issue, of course, is accessibility and whether or not everybody can get online during inclement weather.
Exactly.
So we've got lots of power issues in the city and...
Because with the days that you've chosen, and I understand the 10 days, but many, because the children have the day off, especially in our elementary level, especially your park and rec programs have the, and the daycares and all those kind of things. Either we could train up the P and R programs and the daycares, how to help them with their home, you know, the work that's expected that day. But, but the other thing is just with that window, I mean, to a family, it will just feel like you've dumped more homework, to Joel's point, on them. And so I think that's an important perspective to take is what, and I, and I believe that parents should be involved with their education. They're, they're part of this process. They need to be more than they sometimes are engaged, but that is, that may be a huge part of the perception of it.
So I think the communication around that's going to be the important piece.
Yes, yes. Communication usually is.
Mrs. Manning?
Great job, you guys. This is awesome. I love thinking outside the box, and you've done a fantastic job with this. Just an administrative question, since this is technically a change to our calendar, do we need to get this on the voting schedule? If we're going to add this?
It doesn't shift the published calendar, so it doesn't, I don't think it's going to require any approval from that perspective.
So we won't be advertising it on the calendar as a virtual learning day?
I guess we hadn't thought about doing that, but it's certainly something we could do.
You need to.
It's good communication.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, the calendar has, has, well, hasn't technically gone home, has it, with students?
It's online.
Or it's online?
It's online, and you're going to be looking at a change to it tonight anyway, so...
Right.
Yeah, so whether the addition of the words virtual learning day on top of what's still a staff day and offer students, I guess that's...
Certainly can, yeah.
Administration's discretion as to whether that's a voting change or simply an addition of language to the calendar.
And then to your point, Ms. McLeod, regarding the makeup days, and people might be thrown off a little bit about it. I mean, they're going to be thrown off if we have to add time or add a day in the end anyways.
Mrs. Holtz?
But they won't see them as them having to give the instruction.
Right.
Mrs. Holtz?
Well, a couple of people already touched on what I wanted to say, but going back to October 6th, I kind of see that as enrichment activities that they're going to do that day, not necessarily homework, but enrichment on a subject that they already have had. But I was kind of envious when I read that there were several private schools that did have the actual content matter delivered to their students, and they were able to make it up. But particularly for high schools' kids, don't they all have computers now at home?
No.
No.
Or we're working toward that?
Yeah, we're working towards providing those from Virginia B C public schools. One of the other issues then is whether or not they have internet access.
That's the other thing.
The internet access is the big...
That would be, teachers could put lesson plans online. That would be exactly what they do.
Correct. We think we could largely accomplish that, but we want to see how this goes first and see if it's something that we could do. I mean, really, it's sort of a test run, yeah. A little bit of toes in the water.
This will give us a good, when we've planned ahead of time to experience a virtual learning, will let us know how well, and we'll be able to hear from teachers so that if we wanted to do something like this on an unplanned inclement weather day, what are the mechanisms in place? It will have provided us that opportunity. We'd be able to...
Thank you.
Yeah. We're doing it.
I think too, Ms. Holtz, in an unplanned inclement weather day, you've got some areas in the city, my house being one of them, who we're usually on an 11-day power outage. It's 11 days. You know, I live on a dead-end street, and I'm the only one hooked up to those power lines.
Not being in the hospital.
Yeah.
Batteries, batteries.
And not everybody has a generator. I mean, we're lucky, we do have a generator, but not everybody has a good generator that can run everything.
Mrs. Ryan?
I just have a really quick procedural question. Do we need to, does this require notification to D O E or anything in that vein?
We've had some conversation with D O E. It's just, it's banking time, just like you bank time if you have extra minutes in the day.
Longer days.
Yeah, so we're okay.
Thank you.
And I just asked Kami because I was curious. I think we could just add the words virtual learning day onto the calendar and require a vote, but it would allow us to communicate, so we can do that and make that happen.
Mrs. Weems, back to you again.
Yeah, back to my five minutes adding, starting for the whole school year. I would like to discuss that and put it on the agenda and vote to see if we want to do that, because I think that's an excellent idea to get two extra days.
We'll, we'll go back, talk about that, look at the regulations, and bring them back to you for a conversation.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
So noted. Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Mr. McDonald, please read the motion for us to go into closed session.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The School Board adopted the motion to recess and close meeting pursuant to exemptions